Since the last Select Board meeting on September 11th, I've had time to think about the board discussion regarding recommendations that the Facility Committee proposed during the final presentation on August 28. And it was disappointing to have served on a committee whose final presentation was so well received. And for the committee to have received such encouraging words such as "help to form a new committee", to the comment on September 11th, "The board will take it from here." I don't know what caused the change of direction as it surprised everyone in the audience that evening. Much of the discussion on September 11th was once again around locations, as if the committee had not done due diligence in their final presentation in presenting the choices and how the committee in conjunction with public opinion finalized their number one recommendation. The discussion during the September 11th meeting was the same discussion that we had in September 2016 and September 2015, and I'm sure others have history going back much further. As a town, we aren't keeping up the momentum that the Facilities Committee strove so hard to create. The committee members worked hundreds of hours to consider all possibilities, to research options, to research costs, to find common ground, all in the hope of making a difference for the town of Lee. At the moment, it seems that this work potentially wasn't good.
Thank you, Picard. Any other public comments, please? Thank you. Move on to the next is Randy.
Yep.
There he is. Highway supervisor chimney bids. Boy, you cut off the cord.
Okay, chimney bids. Chimney on the highway annex, the old fire station. Pretty bad disrepair. Where the furnace pipe goes through, it kind of goes into the block wall of the annex. But it doesn't really go into the chimney. In other words, so the heat can go right up through the blocks and not consume the chimney. Kind of a poor situation when they did that. It's also pulling away, it's pulled away about a good inch, inch and a half. And the top's all corroded. And the cleanup door is all rusted out, so it's not too good a shape. Pretty simple structure we get. As I said, we've cut out bids to six vendors, contractors, but they're all pretty busy now, small jobs, so. Two local ones sent back bids. Have no problem either one with cheapest one, we're still waiting for insurance and certificate, I believe. And so I'd like to go with him if that turns out, if not, I'd like to go with him. That's how simple that is. And the money's, they've already asked the trustees, trust funds, and they agreed to take it out of the trust fund. Town Building Trust Fund. So the furnace over there, is that oil or gas?
Oil.
It's a boiler. That's in kind of rough shape, but.
I was gonna ask, is that in rough shape?
It's pretty old, but. The chimney's in worse shape.
Comments or questions on that board? Mr. Wood.
Are you gonna tear it down or are you gonna have Mr. Allen turn it up?
It's a good question. It's probably safer if they do it, if they have staging up there, and it's kind of be discussed. If there isn't ties in it to the building, it'd be very easy for us to hitch a rope on and put the loader to it. Like two minutes. But if it's ties to the building, I don't know, we could try that first. But if it's ties to the building, we don't want to be pulling the building. But I don't think there would be ties if it's already pulled away an inch or so.
So you can't see any ties up there?
We can't see any ties looking through. Like I say, it'd just be a very simple thing to pull it down.
Now, is that hazardous waste?
No, I don't believe so, no. No, it's clay, flue liner, and it's cement blocks, cement blocks.
Nothing? Okay, move to have David Allen Masonry replace the highway annex chimney for his quote "assuming certificate of assurance is acceptable". Move to have, associated with that, to have Kevin Kokesh. Mason, contractors, backup contractor for his quote "project to be funded from the town buildings capital reserve fund". And what's the range of the amount?
Eighteen hundred to thirty-three, I believe.
Come through, Congress. Wait a second. Further discussion?
That trust fund is expendable, right, by us?
All those in favor, please say aye. Your motion carries. Anything else ready?
The only I can mention is the irrigation, the drip irrigation is all installed at Little River Park. So it's got done Friday afternoon. The shed's been painted.
What color?
The same as electrical shed. It's kind of, they call it an autumn something. With green, dark green trim.
So they were able to install all the trees that they had?
All the trees are installed.
I have one suggestion.
Please.
For the park or the new trees. It would be nice if there was something that said, "This is what this tree is. This is what this tree is", so on and so forth, if we could do that somehow from the nursery or, you know, where. Nothing fancy, just a simple.
That's a nice educational area. Sure. I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to know that myself. Little Park is one of the biggest ones, you know.
This is the tall one.
So that's all I'd have to probably up the message that the new truck has come off assembly line last week. Liking and many where it's going, and they all, they want it soon as possible because I think they have a bunch of trucks coming in soon, so. They're not trying to get up there and ask. We'll keep them informed.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we ask the rest of the department to come and ask the?
Absolutely. I think it's a wonderful idea, it's good education for adults as well as children.
I think we should do that for anything we plan.
Absolutely. Next item, transfer station manager, swap shop.
Final plans and two or three other things, sir?
I made some copies here for you. I hope you have your copies. Yeah, I think you're ready. Just wanted to make sure. I think it's a good idea for us to, if we're gonna rebuild the swap shop, it'd be good if we do it in-house. So we have a little more control and keeping the price down. And I split up the numbers here, as you can see, on the frame materials and the concrete. And a little miscellaneous steel, like the rebar and stuff to support the concrete. And I kept it under a certain amount, under twelve. Now we're at around ten-eight, to be exact, but it could fluctuate up and down, estimate. Plus on the back sheet, on the back, I think I made a copy to the Energy Board, that Energy Commission, that were proposing here too. I cannot get a price, what would it cost to put, split units in what they're recommending to do. So it's on the back of the sheet. I made copies of it. I just want to bring that to the fore. I wasn't gonna leave it out, but this is part of it to get it done by the end of the year before winter sets in. So probably incorporating that at the same time. And they have to install the lights in there anyway to change the LED lights, so if they're gonna do that, might as well do everything in one shot. And it just makes a lot of sense doing it that way. And I talked to an electrician and he's gonna actually give me some type of numbers when they can do it, to change these lights and the bulky building, just the bulky building itself in the swap shop, to LED lights. And they say there's an interchangeable kit they actually could take out, won't cost as much to do, to change it to LEDs. And he should be getting back to me anytime soon on that part. And the scheduling part of it, to coordinate with Randy, what his timeframe is and my timeframe. In between, we could work at it after operation hours, or even operation hours if it's slow. We could work with it, continue the building process.
Questions or comments from the board?
This, the last bullet here, swap shop rough estimate. How rough?
Oh, it's right on there, yeah.
You think you're?
Within the pennies, yeah. Because there's also two in between, we could actually ask the residents, anybody like to donate windows or anything like, they want to participate, volunteer in between while we're doing this.
So you don't see any potential problems relative to the construction of it?
No. Had a few people verify information, the numbers show me they were contractors too. And they're pretty right in that area. And it'd be a lot cheaper, because doing it this way, people don't have to pay all the labor costs. And that's, these days now, it's up to over twenty grand just to do something like that.
When would you start?
Whenever you approve. And at the same time, I was gonna ask, in time to close down the swap shop to a period of time, so we could actually have a good transition into the new, so while we're disconnecting power, cleaning, and a little orientation with the volunteers, to get everybody on the same page on the coupons, the money, and so forth.
How long, you close it down?
Just for a few weeks. It'll take much than we need to do. But I don't know, I don't have a timeframe established, I gotta coordinate with Randy on his schedule and our schedule, so we can actually narrow it down.
Once we decide, then you decide. Pryor, any place we can, up there in the marquee inside the transfer station.
Yeah, yeah, once we get approval, put it on the TV and then, you know, put a good sign up front. Just where it temporarily shut down, just to help get all cleaned up.
I understand that you said it's not to exceed eleven thousand, when I see a five thousand coming from the Energy Committee? Is anybody here from the Energy Committee?
What? I couldn't hear you.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. It said, you know, to redo the shed and then it said five thousand dollars coming from the Energy Committee budget.
Yeah, it is, and it's more or less targeted to the heating and cooling of the buildings. I guess it's gonna be two buildings. I don't know, I haven't seen the plans, so.
Name, address, telephone number?
Sharon Meeker, 203 Wiley Falls Road, Lee.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure, I believe him, but it's good to check. Okay.
Okay. Then, do I need to repeat what I said?
No, you got it. At least Denise, yeah. Questions from the board?
Toby, this last page with the heating. So there's a heater in the bulky building now, so what is this gonna do? It says two.
Well, I think in the past, you had the walkthrough with the Energy Committee, and then a gentleman from Staley, New Hampshire came in, we did that walk around with us.
Yeah.
To, in order to save the money and the gas, there's gas in there right now, but the gases, it's not bennett. So it's not bennett, so you smell the propane, and you smell, you get nauseous and sick. So we're gonna try to get that out of there. And put in, they're recommended, actually will save on power, basically. So I don't know how that incorporates into the Energy, I'm sure the Energy electricians and stuff like that, set wise, it'll probably be the reduction in it.
Because this is, this fifty-eight hundred is not inclusive of the ten thousand eight fifty-one thirty, correct? It's an additional amount.
That's why I brought it to attention.
Okay, because that's not budget.
That's why I brought it to attention, because that's part of the Energy Commission part of it.
And also it says included power warranty done by others, so it's gonna be a cost associated with wiring as well.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't know what that is.
That's why I get the electricians to know, let me know how they could tie this in by doing the whole complex. When they plan on doing the transition of all the LEDs, incorporate this into it. But to get it going, we should, you know, try and look ahead and try to get it going before winter sets in. They have heat.
Can I just make a comment?
Please do.
So when he's referencing the LED project, that actually, I met with the Energy Committee last week specifically to discuss the proposed, we'll call it the LED project, which is to invoke the transfer station and the public safety complex, swap over the existing fluorescent fixtures to LED fixtures. Great deal of discussion about it, good discussion about it. I think that the Energy Committee is going to come to the board separately to propose that project, because one of the things we talked about a great deal was how to fund it. New Hampshire Electric Co. has a program that we can finance it through them. So it's somewhere between three and three and a half percent interest over five to eight years. They factor in the projected savings in terms of what you pay each month, and then you get seventy-five percent of that, and twenty-five percent of it goes to pay the load off, so it's a little bit complex. My suggestion was that we should see whether we could just take the money out of the capital reserve fund to fund the project. I believe that the cost to do both buildings is somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen thousand dollars. So based on the discussion with the Energy Committee, I sent an email to John Kappin, the Trustees of Trust, explaining this and asking that the trustees take it up at their next meeting to determine whether they would consider this to be a capital project. I know based on conversations that I've had with Mr. Chapman in the past, for example, if you're gonna change a light bulb, or even a couple of light bulbs, obviously that's a maintenance cost, it's not a capital cost, so it doesn't come out of the capital reserve fund. My argument, if you would be, that this is a wholesale changeover from one type of lighting system to another for two whole buildings. In some cases, yes, you can do it with retrofit kits, in other cases, you have to change out the complete fixture. So I guess the next step now would be to wait for the trustees to offer up their opinion, and then go from there. If the trustees say, "Yes, we see this as being a capital project", then the Energy Committee could come to the board, present all of the information, and then the board could decide what it wants to do, whether you want to do it at all, do you want to pay for it all at once? Do you want to go through this financing program? But that's what he's talking about, when he's talking about the swap over to the LEDs. That's a separate project.
It's a separate issue.
Actually, there are two separate projects, because they're two whole separate buildings. The transfer station being much more complex is my understanding, because fixtures have to be replaced. I think in almost all cases in this building, it's the retrofit.
So you want me to continue on, I could actually continue on and get some prices on from the electricians and that, and find out what it takes. At least you have a ballpark range. I think you're looking at half a dozen, you know. You have something to work with.
The costs for wiring the new heater?
Yeah, that one. That one there, and also the main building and the maintenance shop, I could do that if you're like, the same time.
I'm sorry, you mean the LED project? Well, actually, I think that we should.
Separate it.
Separate these two things, yeah. The LED project is its own project.
It stands on its own merits.
So what I understand is, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. It's eleven thousand dollars to build a building, and out of that, five thousand comes out of the Energy Committee, and the rest of the money comes out of the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund. But this is an additional fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Correct.
So really, it's more than eleven thousand dollars looking forward.
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Well, perhaps you'd want to hold off on the fifty-eight hundred till you find out what the electric costs are gonna be. Because this doesn't, you know, this doesn't.
And also too, I could probably get some more numbers too, if that's only one contract I'm doing, I could actually get a couple more. I'll have to look at that, it might be a little cheaper.
So when you did all this building stuff, you know, all the plans are really nice, I do appreciate all that extra work that you did. Fire looked at this, and police looked at it as well?
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody gets a send in email. Was there any outside lighting that has to be on there, outside the building and such?
Yes.
And it's gonna take care of the squash plant and that kind of stuff?
Now, all that lighting now, we're not getting into the Energy stuff.
Yeah, I know, I'm just looking at safety issues right now.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Whether it's incandescent fluorescent or LED.
Yes, I talked to the electrician out there too, he's gonna relocate the light on the pole and get it out there, the street pole too has to be located. So it's all, for the whole complex, I mean.
Talk to me about the old swap shop.
The old one?
Yeah.
To keep it running?
No, I'm just asking, what are you gonna do with it?
Do you even want it?
No, I don't want it. I'm asking you, what are you gonna do with it?
You're gonna play with it if you want.
You're gonna make the, it's right, you're gonna make a fire burn on that one? No, he says no. You can take it apart, actually.
Yeah, we're gonna disassemble it, we're gonna do something with it, it's coming down by itself.
Yeah, I haven't figured it yet. Any other questions from the board?
So in terms of the extra fifty-eight hundred, so I don't want to stall him.
No, I know either.
So can we okay the building and have him get back to us about the heating and electrical costs?
That was another suggestion I was gonna bring up after the fact. Go ahead to get it all up, see where we're at on the Energy Commission and all that stuff. And then separate it from that point, we might be able to do a lot of it to ourselves, so. Go ahead and get that big chunk out of the way and then see where we're at. It's gonna take a few weeks to do it, but on our schedules.
I don't care about that.
Therefore, I move to accept the swap shop final plan presented by the Transfer Station Manager, including giving permission for the Highway Department to budget their time to assist with this project. Cost not to exceed eleven thousand dollars, and set funds to be paid as follows. Five thousand allocated from the Energy Committee operating budget, remaining funds to come from the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund. Further discussion of motion?
I have a group request that Toby and/or Randy, whoever's in charge of the project, I assume Toby, that they pull the appropriate building permits as well for those particular activities.
Good point, it's good to make.
And hopefully, I don't care if it's not, hopefully Karen won't charge you. I don't think you owe.
You don't bear any.
But I think it's appropriate that he pulled up, if anything, and then we'll get the instructions done by Bill.
Well, we'll make that as friendly as. Comments or questions, Mr. Brown? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Your motion carries. Second part of this one is you need permission to close down the transfer in the swap shop. I move to grant the Transfer Station Manager permission to close the swap shop for the time period during the construction of the new swap shop.
Second?
The new swap shop. That's hard to say. Any other motions on the floor, any questions?
In this, what, two weeks?
Yeah, around two or three weeks, just enough to get everybody on the same page.
So walk me through. So you put up the sign that it's gonna be closed in a week or two or something like that?
Yeah.
So what happens to the stuff that's there? Because you go through it every week.
We have to go through it because a lot of stuff down there now, it's not supposed to be there. So this is there, a lot of that stuff is gonna go.
So when you start back up, it should be fresh, there should be nothing?
Oh, yeah, it should be nothing that's down there, it's gonna be everything's.
Give it a couple of days, it'll be picked over and then just.
Oh, yeah.
So I just ask at this point, when you finally make the decision between the Highway Department and your department, that you put notice in maybe the E-Crier, enough time ahead so people, they won't be pestering you bringing material down, put on the marquee of costing the transfer station itself on the TV set, and anyplace else, so it'll just reduce any confusion.
Sure.
Okay, motions on the floor, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Your motion carries. Thank you very much. Selectman Bubbe, Department head training?
Can we force seat? Can we not do force?
What happened to bulky fees?
Bulky fees. That was the, I don't know, the talk on how to, how to incorporate this. The tickets, the coupons, and have the residents and the volunteers to have an understanding that looking at the material and the price list to pay the ticket first before they drop off. And it gives a chance to look at it if it's worth dropping off there or not.
That's a problem.
Okay. So you don't need anything else, you're just letting this know?
Yeah, letting you know, plus the other thing I was thinking about, maybe sometime in the upcoming future, I think going to checks might be a good thing, but it's the thing you and I talked about is if we're gonna purchase tickets, if they're gonna purchase, well, purchase the tickets, we'll say tickets, and then how do you get the money back at the checks, right? So that's something we have to look into. Instead of having all these ticket coupons and all this juggling money out there all the time, it's easier to just write a check and done. Because there's a few surrounding towns are doing it, I'm gonna go out and see how they're doing it.
Okay.
So we get an idea, and then go from there.
Because you said the tickets cost, what, twelve hundred dollars to?
Right now, I'm gonna search it for, I'm going to Staples right now, see if they got me out on this, because tickets are running like twenty-three hundred dollars, two thousand six hundred dollars, just for a purchase.
Yikes.
You know, that's just a lot of money there, just to have those coupons and. So it's, that's why I brought that, well, checks could be a good thing if it's coming here.
How would we, just thinking out loud, how, because Toby and I talked about the check part. That's gonna create a problem with it, because what happens is, you buy a coupon, unless you buy it with a check.
That's a thing.
Your thing gets taken by somebody, so you get your money back, so does he hold the check for a week? I don't know if we like that, but then.
Yeah, we kind of talked about that, we'd have to figure that part out also. From speaking with Mr. Van Aken, it isn't that often that an item gets brought to the bulky, I mean, to the swap shop, and ends up getting taken. I think the other thing that we need to look at is to really tighten up on the things that are getting dropped off at the swap shop. For example, there are things you're not supposed to bring there, and I think they end up there, you know, car seats, you're not supposed to bring those to the swap shop. So I think that's one of the things he's talking about, kind of wholesale changing what you can bring to the swap shop and how that's all gonna work.
It'll be good, that's the one little portion of it, by closing it for a few weeks so we have that good transition, so have everybody have an understanding that we can drop car seats off, because you don't know if they're safe or not.
Of course.
And that's just a primary example, that is one item, but there's other things, two and four.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Bubbe.
So this is the proposal we got from Sue, she was the one that was recommended by Ann Driscoll. She's had a conversation with Ann, and she's proposing three hours, and she's proposed some dates, Monday the 23rd from nine till noon, Tuesday the 24th at noon or the morning or afternoon, and the morning of October 30th from noon or morning or afternoon of the October 31st. Those are the times that are available. She would have a conversation about the disc results, get this up to speed, and also either have a conversation and/or an email or something from people to find out what things working down, what things don't work it down, so it's about process. So this is the second phase that Ann proposed to us way back when. And I've never had her as a trainer. I spoke to her on the phone, she sounds quite good, plus Ann saying she's good for us.
She's gonna be pretty good at this one. So I guess at this time, we want to move forward, I'll leave it with the town administrator, find out what day is probably good, probably do a quick survey or something, and find out, and who would be invited?
The same people who were invited before.
And is anybody willing? Which is all the department?
All the department, the only difference is gonna be Toby's gonna be noon, Roger's not gonna be here. And she said she'd be willing to either meet with Toby tomorrow or talk to him over the phone.
Bring him up to speed a little bit?
Yeah. So I think there's a total of twelve?
Eleven?
I don't know, whoever came last time.
Any funds are available for you or accounts?
We could take one of the training projects.
I got a little photo on that, I guess. Thank you. Mr. Kozowski, Sustainability Committee Training logo.
Paul Kozowski, 469 Breland, and Dean Rubine, off of High Road from the Sustainability Committee, and we're looking for a reaction and approval to use the 250th logo for sustainability use. And the history behind this is, at one of our meetings in early August, in the context of drafting some articles for the E-Crier, one of our members thought it would be appropriate and a nice idea to identify our committee with effort to get our logo. And he pursued a conversation with Amy Daskel, who's the artist of the original logo, and she has granted us permission for use, and I pursued a number of other folks I felt should be contacted on a courtesy and for their reactions. So, so far. So, so far, Jan Allen of the two-fiftieth committee and Tom Dronfeldt, the police department had used the logo, are okay with its use. I spoke with town administrator Glover and I'm here with you tonight because I am contacting you via email, Scott Bubby, thought it would be good to bring it before you. And I agree, and I was kind of hopeful that this would be the last thought because we want to make sure that it's okay with you and it's okay with others. So in your backup, you have a draft design of what we have in mind. You know, and I think we're just looking for something to identify that we are, I don't think it's exclusive use, we just want to be able to use it, so, you know, I suspect others would be able to use it too.
Thanks, Eric, I think it's a great idea to do this and then, I'm glad you said other people could bite from other committees might want to use the same thing for permission and put their epitaph on there, so, but it carries the same unique characteristic of the earlier drawing.
It's a nice piece of art and it really worked well for the two-fifty and this would put it to additional use.
I think it's a wonderful, to me, just for a question, you said that the, was it copyrighted?
No, I don't believe it was copyrighted by her.
Do we have permission from, is anywhere legal permission?
I believe they got in touch with the designer.
We go through conversation and through email with Amy Daskel, who's the original artist.
Okay, just, yeah.
And our rendition is based on her artwork, because I think that when it went to the two-fiftieth committee and Tom, I think it went elsewhere for additional artwork, so we're working from, she gave us.
The reason I bring it up, because I enjoy your idea that Yuri might use it, but somebody else might make a small change. If we can do something for the town administrator to make contact somehow, that that way when other departments or committees want to use something similar, she won't feel like it's like, here they come again, here they come again, here they come again.
I think that's a good idea, it's an important piece of art, it's going to be with the archive forever. And so I think that would be a good thing to do.
Well, we can actually put it on the letterhead, once we tie it together, it'll be a formal thing.
Yeah.
Further questions for the board?
I'm all set.
I'm fine.
I think we're fine, I think you're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it forward, I appreciate it. Deborah, revised town building site plan.
So I met with Art and we had a good discussion regarding the changes in what was proposed. There's really two parts to this now, just tell you a little bit because the cost doesn't change. He had an idea that the, we were going to move the museum over to near the town hall and not create a basement. And his suggestion was, why would you do that? Because, because you lose space, because right now at least you have storage in the basement. So if you're not changing the size and you're really not gaining anything other than just the movement to align things, his thinking was that might make much more sense to leave it there and to architect the library in such a way that it would be behind it. So you could still have the same square footage, but it could kind of l behind it. So that's one piece of it, and then as you have in your documentation, regardless of which way we go, his cost is twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars to make the change to the plot plan. So.
Questions? So the first part, with respect to leaving the museum alone in building United, you talked to library about that?
No, no, I did not.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I don't, I didn't talk to library about it either, but I know the historical society would rather have the two buildings together because they're talking about having the flow. They come into the freight depot and they go into the exhibits in the town hall, so they need to be connected. That would be my only thing, and thinking about the basement, they won't have a basement in the location, but they'll have the second floor of the town hall to put their stuff in, so that was the thought.
So that comes down to the, you know, how do we want to have them proceed about the drawing?
That was the original question, was it, we wish to have them make a modification to the drawing?
Yes, the only reason why I brought up the second one is because in looking at the drawings and understanding it and the movement of the freight depot, he said, why would you bother when you would in fact lose space here?
Yeah, it's this year.
Yeah.
But yeah. So I don't think over here, you'd have to tweak some things, that's probably where the seating system. I think, it's right there, is that, that's the.
Okay, so what is, what is he suggesting?
He's suggesting, if I'm hearing her correctly, leave the freight depot there and move these buildings back so that it doesn't touch those two, instead of moving it over here.
Right, and it obviously didn't make a drawing, so I have very little to show you, but he did.
But the thing is, historical society wants those two buildings connected, so you come into here, you deal with exhibits and then you continue on looking, so it's kind of like.
Kind of imagine. So it would allow the oval shed to go back to where it was and, so this would be where the Sillie Field out here. So basically, and instead of going, doing that with the library, it would be more that. That's the difference. And he said that he would recommend creating a circular entrance here incorporating these buildings, and that's what that half circle is. So it allows you to save money to not move this one, not move this one, and move this instead.
Okay, thanks.
I couldn't really make copies of it.
Well, what's your opinion? We can go with what we had before and just leave what it was originally. Move it together.
Well, like I said, that's not what the historical society would like.
Yep.
And I think you're going to have to move the oval shed anyways because you're going to have to put something underneath it, foundation, plus you're going to have to fix it structurally, so, but.
All right, we at least proceed, not go, not leaving the museum where it is.
Go with the.
Original.
The plan and just change it straight away, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to go with that, I think that's, we'll proceed at that point. But before you, is there anything else that you need?
Adjust as the twelve-hundred-and-fifty occurred.
Is this coming under the capital reserve fund? I think that we've used the capital reserve fund in the past for design work.
If the trustees allow us to do it.
My question is that what the trustees did not approve was the cost to do the postcard?
The mailing card?
The mailing card, we paid for that already, operating pressure.
Well, I think it's the little one that we need, so let's go ahead and have them do it and then we'll find out if they are okay with it coming out of there. If not, then we'll have to find it someplace else.
Okay.
Well, therefore I move to have, what's the name of the company again?
A G Architects.
A G Architects to go ahead with a, what do they call a?
Rhythm.
Rhythm.
It's elevation to.
What else?
Site elevation.
It's a plot plan.
It's a plot plan, it's just a plot plan.
Corrected my words, trying to use the elevation.
Thought we were having them do elevations, no?
No, just a plot plan.
So basically, it's another one of these.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Yes.
So A G Architects to a plot plan that exceeds one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars might come from the capital reserve.
Down buildings.
Town building capital reserve fund.
Town building capital reserve.
Question, when the board spoke about this last, we were also going to get a revised site plan for Stevens Field.
I don't think Stevens Field changes.
Yeah.
But it doesn't change.
It doesn't change at all?
Doesn't change.
Okay.
Because there's nothing changing there.
Well, unless it matters because the facilities committee recommended a smaller building, I think. I'm just, I was part of the discussion the last time.
That building was seven-thousand-something square feet.
Seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven.
Anyway, mid, seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven, so I think it gives people an idea.
Okay.
I think it comes back to something that Deborah brought up before, which I'll follow up with, is in terms of how are we going to proceed with this? Is it going to be the three of us hunching this thing through?
Let's hold on that, I agree.
Okay.
Is there second of the motion?
I'll say.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, sir, you have the floor. Deborah, stay there.
Is it, I guess going forward, this is one of the things we talked about in terms of deliverables. Is it going to be the three of us mustering this thing through? Because that's a lot of time, pressure, energy on our shoulders. I would welcome assistance from other people who would be willing to help us do this.
Yeah, I would too. My thought on that is that we would put together a committee that focuses on that area with us being a part of that committee.
Okay.
That's what my hope was, so I was going to ask Deborah to make some recommendations.
Okay, so the thing that she was referencing in the minutes from last meeting, the minutes didn't reflect your thoughts at that particular time, or is that?
No, I think I said it would be a committee appointed beyond just us.
All right, that's not what the minutes reflect.
That wasn't the discussion, that was not the discussion the last time we met, the board's committee.
Yeah, well, the board has changed its mind.
Okay.
It's a dynamic board. Since we were put on the spot by the committee, I'm joking.
I have a question.
Please.
And that is what, what is it this committee would be charged with? I mean, are we going to open up the plans again to say, well, no, do this with this building, we'll do this? Or is it simply the committee to, if you would, to put together the marketing and sales plan to go out there and try and sell this to the voters? What is going to be the charge of the new committee? Sooner or later, we have to freeze, we have to freeze the facility itself, say, this is what it's going to be. We agree that this is what it's going to be.
I thought we ended up, permit me, is that we were going to bring something to the voters, not, you know, a final detail.
And what were we going to put in front of it?
It's either we're going to do, we're going to go ahead because the church is going to louse to buy this piece of land and town hall is going to go here, and then all these other chain reaction things will take place. Or if that doesn't happen, we have Stevens Fields to put the town hall in, and still all the other things will have a chain reaction when it comes to completion. We'll provide, obviously, you know, depending how early we have to do this before we have to make a formal decision, there might be two options on the table.
Okay, so that's, I mean, that's, it would be the two options.
And then I hope.
I think we have to agree that that's the two options, period.
Well, I have come to that, yes.
Well, okay, I just want to be sure that when we go forward, we've come to that and that's what's, that's what the committee is going to work with.
Yes.
So we're not going to back up and say, well, maybe we should do this with the library or do this with the library or do this with the museum or whatever. The plan is the plan.
Those are plans and the committee is going to hunch this and try to keep it alive and try to get public acceptance, either way, I guess, okay. Is that what you're understanding?
It is now, it wasn't, it wasn't two weeks ago.
I'm glad you brought it to my attention.
But this is still, that if anything is on the warrant in March, it's going to be to ask for money to do design work?
I don't think we've decided that, I think we talked about two things.
Yeah.
And this is just me, I talked about two things. One, what you guys have both talked about in terms of the original plan to do the town center. Church doesn't want to sell this property, town hall goes on Stevens Field.
Yes.
The second part of this is, we could propose that as a total project to the voters, three-point, whatever it is, million. Or depending on what we're thinking, maybe we ask for just design monies to design that to give them a full view, if you will, of what that particular whole project is. We've talked about timing, how long is this going to take us? And I think that comes back to my original thing in terms of, I think we need some assistance. So I think if we have a large enough committee, energized enough committee, I think you can probably do the whole presentation. If we kind of have kind of not so much energy, I think we probably want to fall back and do the design thing maybe. But I think that's a conversation we need to have, but I agree with both of you. Town hall first at the.
Yes.
Town center, and then back up if the church done this, so.
Either, but in either case, are we not going to put in front of the voters both options or none?
You could put both options if you wanted to, you have to one, you'd have to word them appropriately, but.
That was not the intention of the facilities.
I understand, I just want to be sure that we're clear on what we're going to do, Deborah, is, you know.
I understand, and we had a number one recommendation followed by a number two recommendation. Just, I'm just clarifying.
If we get a price from the church and we say, okay, that's, we can, we can go with that, do we remove the second option from going in front of the voters and say, this is, this is what you got? Is that what we're doing? Or do we still give them the second option to look at?
Okay, so let me step back, when you say two options, you're talking about the two options in terms of where town hall goes, or the two options in terms of the whole project, the design?
The plan, here's the one that the facilities committee came up with, and then the fallback one that says we go to Stevens Field if we don't go with number one, if you would.
So.
Do the, do the, do the voters get to see both of those, or do we just go forward, we put funding?
At this point, I would recommend us, if the church says yes, I would recommend us presenting that particular plan that the town hall is over there. And we don't offer them Stevens Field.
We don't offer the Stevens, we don't put that in front of voters.
That's, in terms of what the committee came up with, that's our number one and our number two is.
I thought it was a timing issue.
There is a timing issue, I mean, we're going to talk about the budget calendar tonight, but January sixteenth is the last day that we can hold a bond public hearing. I just, I don't know how you have enough time to put together plans and elevations and numbers, whatever you're going to do in a marketing plan for a three-point-four million dollar project between December and, some date in December and January sixteenth.
I thought we were moving more towards a concept. If we put enough estimated costs and this is the layout, these are the phases and this is how we're going to do it.
We can have that discussion, we haven't had that discussion, we've talked about different things, but we haven't had that discussion.
Yeah, but I think we're all, I think we're all agreed that it has to be a committee besides just us at this point. So I'm going to look towards Deborah to make recommendation.
I will.
Okay, at least three people.
I haven't actually put together a list, I don't have it with, I don't, sure.
And could you give the town administrator, so can you send it up to us ahead of time?
Sure.
Okay. And why these three people would be of use beside yourself? I don't want to have a thing that's too big, I want to have something that's worth it.
I think the more important thing is who's on the committee and how vested they are.
Yes.
Not, what did the word, we use champion, we use something else, but.
Yeah.
It's going to have to be some rah 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 kind of, you know.
People would get up there and stimulate, right?
Well, if we know, I mean, if individuals know people who are, you know, public relations persons or social media, you know, have that skill set and they're actively working in that space, that would be very helpful.
And I think it's prudent for us to have the discussion, you know, if we don't think we have enough time to get the appropriate information out in the appropriate amount of time, then yes, let's step back and, you know, maybe you propose the design stuff to give them more information. I'm okay with either of those things, I think this is an important project, I think we need to do it right. And whatever that entails going forward. I think the biggest challenge we're going to have is in terms of educating the voter in terms of the merits of this particular proposal, and I think that's an important thing. And if we rush it, we can lose it. But I think that's going to be the most important thing. And not, what's the word I want to say, in terms of forcing them to do it. It's like, give them the information, they're educated, they can determine if it's a good thing, if it's not a good thing. But I think it's an investment and I think we need to take the time to do it right.
Yeah, I agree.
So the other thing to bear in mind, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, there will have to be a warrant, assuming that the church is willing to sell the property, there will have to be a warrant article to approve the purchase. there will have to be a warrant article to approve the purchase of the church property. So, let's not lose sight of that as you discuss whatever it is else you're going to put on the warrant, that it becomes conditional.
And I think that's a separate thing, no matter what. So, from what we've heard, the church is not going to say no, it's just no matter how much it is. So, either way, I think we need to purchase that, so.
So if you could think about the membership a little bit, and start putting some thoughts in, I think you're gaining a feeling where we're trying to go.
Right.
So how are we going to, and it can't be just have meetings, because you've already had meetings with the public, which I would sense would be things, be putting the choir in other places that you, updates as we move on.
Just one other question. I mean, I know you just approved a twelve hundred and fifty dollars, but in light of the conversation you just had, is that still a wise expenditure to make two changes to a plot plan for twelve hundred and fifty dollars?
I think we need some kind of plan. Yeah, I think we need something, unless somebody can do, this is ours, so.
No, but are you immediately going to share that with the public, such that you need to move now because you're going to start sharing it?
I see what you mean.
But I'm thinking the committee is going to be more involved in, now's the time, and, you know, I just, I just don't want to.
I don't, I don't need this next week, but also, I think I need this before the deliberative session. So we can show people what we're thinking about.
And by that time, I mean, there may be, we may agree on an elevation design, maybe. Or maybe it is something as simple as that, and it's the design dollars for the, for the deliberative session. Maybe, I don't know. You don't know, I don't know. Yep. Well, we would probably want the site plan to explain why you want to buy the church property.
Yeah, we need something, absolutely.
But the other thing is, this is easily stuck in a CAD program or something like that, so.
I would imagine.
Yes, yes, I'm glad that certain people in the audience have raised their hands, because there are certain people that I know are able to do this, and maybe they'll volunteer.
There we go. We're working a right plan. So we can, we'll hold on to the funds, we'll just make sure.
We're going to hold for now, I'll just inform.
We'll make sure that they're available in case needed.
Do you recognize Mr. Tappin?
Yes, I do. Let's do it.
Trying to tap in one of these seven stepping stones road. If you're looking for something like the drawing that I've already done, with.
Something like, something that we can present to say, okay, this is where we want the buildings to be?
Yes. Well, I'm referencing the drawing that I did, which is the recommended purchase of the church property. And that has, the existing buildings are on layers, the proposed buildings are on layers. It doesn't have the new building, it has just what's on two D. It doesn't have the tree symbols, just because I didn't pick the tree symbols and stick them on. But it can. If that's what you're looking for, then I'm volunteering to do that. If you're looking for, um, whatever nice kind of, um, freehand drawing, the lines aren't quite straight, they don't quite meet, it looks very artsy. My CAD program doesn't do that, and I'm not an artist, and I'm not volunteering for that.
You've got a colored pencil, don't you?
Um, well, I think they're providing color, yes, it's pretty color. You can make it colored, but, um, I'm not sure how that is done, but there's some, it really looks like it was done by hand.
He, are confirmed it was.
It was, okay. I'm not volunteering to do something by hand. I'm volunteering to do something like what's on the backside there, what was done for the proposed, um, plot line adjustment.
Which I think is good.
Yeah.
Because you've got all this stuff there.
That's.
But can you make the buildings covers?
Yes.
So they stand.
There are colors on my screen, but when I print it on my black and white laser printer, they're black.
Okay.
If I print it on the color printer, they're in color.
I have no problem with that. If you want to work with Deborah on that and see where we go.
So, that's not volunteering for elevations or.
No, it's just.
Things like that. No artist concepts, no, what is it like, is there a clock driving in and looking through the windshield of the car, or anything like that?
Yeah, because I think that would work. He's, he's got all this stuff on.
Yeah, I know, I think it's funny. Put a little green on something, car or something. Did you work with Deborah on this?
The plan, where is it going to change again?
This is, this is not, well, this is, yes. This is under three S. This, this right here is too big. They're only proposing forty-seven fifty, and this is seven thousand.
So we should update it to what it's going to be?
We could.
What we agree on that it's going to be.
Yeah.
Right?
Is that something that?
Yes.
You would want, because that and also the library expansion, that's a total of seventy-four, and it's only six.
Sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, so, we just need something that's.
Yeah.
Okay, all, all I'm asking is, whatever it is, it should be the plan.
Yes, I'm good.
The only other thing I'd ask, so that we have, Mr. Stevens is happy, is you take off those little wigs, little bums up, off the parking lot, so he can sleep at night?
They're actually on the final. You don't have the final.
Oh, no, I guess not. Because that, I believe that keeps him up at night thinking about flower notes, so.
He's going to have to worry about art stuff.
Good, good.
I'm glad we got to that.
So Mr. Stevens can sleep tonight.
Yeah, maybe you won't have to plow at that time anymore. But time is fit, we'll set that down. Yeah, we won't go there. Thank you, O'Gorman.
Okay.
To you, Deborah, time measuring.
So, a related matter. At the last meeting, there was some discussion about putting some information in the e-cryer, but Mr. Van I had a difference of opinion as to exactly what the direction was. But I guess based on tonight's discussion, it sounds like there really isn't anything to put out there yet.
And I agree, until we get a plan, a, a, a plan that's completed to give an estimate plan at this point, a plot plan, and then some material to go with it, that the board, along with the facilities committee, is proposing consideration, some fuzzy word at this point. But this is what we have at this date, that doesn't mean it's totally done. But I want to keep something in front of, on the e-cryer on a continuous basis, to keep people alert to what's happening.
Okay, again, so what, what information is it that we're putting in the e-cryer relative to the work of the facilities committee in the first building?
And if we have a plot plan, I'd like to scan it and stick it in there.
Okay, I guess I would want the board to approve it before we do that.
Sure, I understand. But I'll probably do.
So we won't be putting anything in this Friday?
No, it's not. Nothing this Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think if we have a series of, every single week, if there's an update or something, just to keep people in the loop, um, for those six hundred, some odd people that get that particular thing. But yeah, if there's any updates, I think the initial one has to talk about the process that we've gone through so far, and the committee, and then what we've come up with.
Yes.
And then.
Try to get some excitement somehow.
Yeah.
So, not this.
Okay, thank you. The fiscal nineteen budget calendar, um, I, we don't have the schedule from the ABC yet, but I still wanted to get this in front of the board so that you can approve, um, some of the statutory dates, so that we can start working towards that. So as we've done in past years, I put in the deliberative session for the first possible day, which is February third, and then things work backwards from that, so that the first budget public hearing would be January second. Second.
January second.
January second. Which is, I think, just about what it was last year. It might have been the third, but that's what it was last year. Um, and then the second budget public hearing would be on January sixteenth. Now, these are both Tuesdays, because there are two Monday holidays in January. Uh, the board would finalize the budget and warrant on January twenty-second, because the last day to post the warrant and the budget is January twenty-ninth.
I sent the schedule, the ABC scheduled both of you two?
Yes.
You're both okay with it?
Yeah.
Then, uh, that's the schedule.
Well, I have a.
I did, okay.
All right. The twenty-sixth, I won't be here.
Twenty-sixth of October?
Yes. So it has the police department, I was hoping to hear that, so if you could move it.
Okay.
That's the only date I won't be here. And so's the library, same time.
Ten twenty-six. Is that, that shouldn't be a planning board. You're just out of.
Yeah, I'll be in Atlanta. Yeah, it's not a planning board. I'll be in Orlando.
All right, I'll see if I can find another third deal.
Okay. Yeah, that would be fine. Okay.
And then you'll send us a copy because we.
When I, yeah, when I switch it, yeah. I didn't send it to you because they hadn't approved it?
Yep. It's just, we got to, you know, start posting everything and.
Well, the ABC people go back to it, but these two can't, because then they'd be in trouble, so.
Okay, so what is the proposed first date that they're going to be making?
Um, you just got to talk to anybody else.
October fifth, okay, thanks.
So we're in the same ballpark as we were last year, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the dates are good with the board?
Yeah, we'll have to determine if we're doing a bond or whatever.
Right.
At that particular time, so.
Okay. Uh, you also had in the agenda packet a proposal from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission for, uh, the MAP Geo, um, program. Karen Rossi and I met with a representative from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, and we both really liked it. It's pretty cheap money, it's a thousand dollars a year. Um, I don't know if you want to make this decision tonight, but if you want to take a look at what it is, you could go on the City of Dover's website. And if you go onto the assessing department over on the left, and select property cards and data, that brings you into their MAP Geo. It, it takes the assessing cards and the assessing data that we have online, and really kicks it up a notch. You can, um, select an address, and then it comes up with a map and shows you where the property is, and then you can select different layers. So in other words, you can select, well, what are the schools nearby? What are the conservation land nearby? What's the recreation land nearby? It just provides a whole lot of information in one place, so that, um, residents and anyone else who's looking at our assessing data, which is a lot of different people, not just, quite frankly, residents in the town, will have much more information available to them from the computer. As I said, it's, the cost is only a thousand dollars a year. But if you want to take a look at it, and I can bring this back at the next meeting, you might want to just look at the City of Dover, what they, what it looks, see what it looks like.
Yeah, I'd like to take a crack at it. Let's make sure you bring it back.
Yeah.
Does this replace the Avatar site, or not?
No.
This is.
No. It works with Avatar, is what I understand.
Okay, so you can still go into the Avatar site to look at our stuff? Where you can go into this and get more information?
Yes, although this will let you see the assessing card, or the assessing information, you see now.
Sounds interesting. If that was, who else has it besides Dover?
Uh, Dover has it. Um, I think Durham is looking at it. The National Regional Planning Commission is doing it. I think it's relatively new. I know they've been working on it for a while, but it's pretty complex, and obviously requires a lot of data from the town that they have to gather, obviously, to make this work. So they already have to know where our conservation properties are, for example.
Which they probably do anyways.
Right, but it all has to be put together.
So what, what is the burden on us? What do we have to provide then?
The platform and a thousand dollars a year.
So they do all the other input or anything like that, or whatever it is?
Mm-hmm.
And then periodically, they'll get updates from Avatar to?
Yeah, I'll have to find out whether, how often they update MAP Geo. I'm going to assume that it's not monthly, but it would certainly be.
So, maybe for the next time, maybe we could ask Cynthia Cleveland and find out what's the update process, and what do we have to do as a town, or do they do it automatically from Avatar?
Yep.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, it does. I'd like to piece out, just want to look a little bit more.
Yep.
I'm pretty enthusiastic about it.
So the next item, uh, as you may recall, the auditors were in, uh, earlier this month. And one of the things, uh, Matt Murray, Murray, that's his last name. We have a lot of Matts, I always get the last names confused. We're talking about is, in the past, we have put in a forty thousand dollar allowance as sort of a designated fund balance, if you will. So in other words, the easiest way I have of looking at it is, so forty thousand was deducted from the availability of the unassigned fund balance. But I asked him, I said, is that a realistic number? Where does the forty thousand dollars come from? So then he went and he did some analysis, and that's what that spreadsheet is that you saw in the packet. So, basically, based on kind of a five-year average, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars every year is unpaid taxes from previous years. Now, certainly, taxes then get paid, but because it keeps rolling forward, so maybe the oldest years get paid, but then you have the newer tax bill that isn't quite getting paid. So, just wanted to put this in front of the board and get some idea. I don't think, well.
So you still.
I think he wants the information sooner rather than later, obviously, because we want to get the, um, audit done as quickly as possible.
So, you're saying he's forty thousand, I don't know, it's going to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
You could put the forty thousand dollars in, or you could put the hundred and seventy-five, or you could pick some number in between, but I just wanted to make the board aware that when you talk about what the unassigned fund balance is, now we know, well, a hundred and seventy-five thousand of that is, you know, uncollected taxes.
Uncollected taxes.
On average.
Ultimately, it's how, either they're going to get the property, or they're going to get the money, plus the interest. So it's not like an uncollected debt.
Well.
Because we're going to get it eventually, one way or the other.
We hope, sure.
We'll get it in the end, but it does reflect exactly, we're trying to get a better handle on what the budget is. It should reflect what it is at that time.
But I mean, again, you know, the budget is a snapshot in time, any time that you're looking at it. You tend to look at things as the end of the fiscal year. And so, yeah, we might be getting paid eventually, but again, by the time you're getting paid, maybe you're picking up some of the payments for two thousand fourteen. Well, now you've got unpaid for sixteen and seventeen, so.
Well, I think in terms of the calculations we did, in terms of coming up, at least the ones that I did for the one and a half million, I was using a little over three hundred thousand in terms of uncollected. So, in my vision, that, whatever that number is, if it's a hundred and seventy-five or forty, I don't think it's ever going to be forty, or three hundred thousand, that comes out of the, that is included in the one point five million.
Well, the one point five million is you reported, not as the auditors reported. So they're just looking for direction. Do you want to keep putting forty thousand in?
I think we should go with the recommendation, is this why you have auditors?
I don't know if they're recommending either one, they want to just know what they do.
They just want to know what we want to do.
For me, I, I, as little as possible, because eventually you're going to get all this money. The only time you're going to have anything that you're going to write off is if you write off taxes. And we never do that. If we get to.
Probably grab something and it's relatively worthless.
Then we're going to write off whatever that is. It's not going to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we're likely, instead of.
Well, let's just take an extreme example, though. Let's suppose we have, we're told that we have a one point five million dollar unassigned fund balance on June thirtieth of, take a year, quite frankly, one point five million. And the board, could be this board, could be that, so the board says, you know what? We have a big project we want to spend, and so we want to take one point five million dollars out of the unassigned fund balance.
But you can't.
But you can't, because you're going to be short a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so.
Well, I think this board has already said the minimum is one point five anyways.
Right.
So, it's never going to go below one point five. So, I think the difference for me is, from what they say in the audit report, last year was two million, two hundred and twenty, uh, two million, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. I look at the difference between that and the one point five, or one point five one, whatever that happens to be. And any of this uncollected stuff is going to be taken care of in the one point five, because it's like three hundred thousand, it's been three hundred thousand for a lot.
And I just think we should boost it up a little bit, it's ridiculous, forty thousand dollars.
Doesn't really make any difference, doesn't change what the, what the, it changes in terms of what's uncollected. That's a lot further, but...
He still didn't ask me the answer, how they come up with the forty thousand. The recommend...
Uh, you know, I honestly didn't push him too far on how you came up with the forty thousand.
Did that forty thousand come up from, what, years ago?
I can ask him.
Yeah, could you do that? I'm just curious at this point. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Scott, at the same time. It's be interesting to find out where the forty thousand dollars came from, is that from twenty years ago?
Well, he's not gonna know any of that.
Well, he's got enough of the calculation, Kate.
I think the sanders are probably, if you wanna think about that.
I can ask him.
Could you ask him, bring us back again? Does he need it right away?
But, but what difference does it make? But it's forty thousand, it's a number. I mean, it's a number, that's all it is, it's a number. And he's saying, "Well, pick another number that's closer to the hundred and forty or..."
That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That's really, it's a qualitative, take a shot, but...
Well, it's, maybe it's a little more believable than the forty thousand. Yeah, well, the hundred and seventy-five thousand is the average figure that he came up with, is that's the recommendation.
So really, all we have to do is say, "Yeah, we'll take his recommendation," or no, we don't.
That's exactly...
I don't wanna represent this as his recommendation.
I don't think that's what his recommendation is.
This is, this is information. Because I knew, when we talked about the forty thousand, I knew we have way more than that
You sure do.
in uncollected taxes. And I certainly wasn't gonna tell him, "Keep it at forty or make it a hundred and seventy-five." That's a decision for the board to make, because obviously it affects the unassigned fund balance. The reported, let's put it that way. It affects the reported unassigned fund balance. And the reported unassigned fund balance matters when we go for a bond. Because the amount of money that we have in unassigned fund balance affects our credit rating. So...
Then I promote zero.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanna go back and find out what the forty thousand's all about.
Because it notes in here how much our uncollected property taxes are. It's already in the audit report. So if somebody's looking at that. So if he's actually previously taken out forty thousand out of the unsigned fund balance, I think it's counting it twice.
Well, that's why maybe you answered the question, can you make it zero? I understand it's one way or the other.
Because if you really wanna be wicked conservative, wicked, 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 so the previous or subsequent board would never be able to play with it, you'd take out whatever the uncollected property taxes are.
Exactly, exactly.
And for me, I've already taken that out of the unsigned fund balance, so I would never, if we had one point five million unassigned, I would never have, I would request to take out one point five million, because I know it's not there. So I guess we need more information.
Can we be zero? It's a good question. Interesting conversation.
I don't know if you can be zero. I think you have to re, I think you have to at least...
We have to recognize it.
I think you have to recognize that you have unpaid taxes at the end of every year.
Exactly. I think the worst case would be if we ever wrote anything off. What would that be?
Yeah, but fifty thousand sounds like a good recommendation.
I would be okay with fifty thousand.
There I go.
Well, I'm just, I can tell him fifty, I can tell him fifty thousand.
Wait a second, fifty thousand. I still want the information anyways.
Yeah. How about if we table until the next meeting, we can have our...
Yeah, that's good.
Done.
Uh, I think that's all I have.
Okay, I have number nine. Before I move on that, item B, town, not again notice of public hearing, what was that about?
We received a notice of public hearing from the town of Noddy.
What item do you want me to approve?
We get these occasionally, I, they must be, they must consider us in a butter.
They're revoking something.
I guess it's kind of, uh, the notice came to the town of Lee, and so I wanna at least make it public, and there really isn't another forum for making such things public, so we put them in the consent agenda. I mean, this isn't, this isn't the first time that we've received public hearing notices from other towns, and you go, "Okay, thank you, that's nice, I'm not sure why you're telling us." Frequently, what I see them with is, um, cell towers.
Or it was a joint decision between the two planning boards on a piece of property that bugs spoke to Lee and Noddy.
Yeah.
Can you find out from Karen when you get a chance on that?
Sure. Ms. Rossi gave it to us.
Well, ask Ms. Rossi, what does it mean next time we're waking these things? Therefore, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Can I remove A and F?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
A and F will be removed.
Did you move?
Yeah.
Second?
Okay. With A and F being removed?
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Karen, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So are we talking about the business card resolution?
We didn't approve it.
We can talk about it, but we didn't approve it.
Right.
Oh, did we have things to sign for the rest of them, or are we...
Uh, you took the minutes out. You took this out. And then you go to some tests.
Are you sick, Mr. Brown?
Hmm?
Are you sick?
No, no.
Why, did you think he was sleeping there?
Too much drain and water last Thursday? Says we're municipal assessing. That's you. You are, you are the official assessor of the town.
Is that right?
Yeah, if we do the signing, we can discuss the other two. Okay, got Mr. Brown. A, nine A, what, what business card?
So in order to be able to make changes, and I actually, I think this came up because Ms. Clancy was trying to change the name on a credit card from Roger Rice to Toby Van Aken, and they said, "In order to do that, you have to get your board to adopt this resolution." So we can't make changes. This is to say, the people in the town who are authorized to access the information online and to possibly make changes to the... The reason it's not just Ms. Clancy is maybe she has to be out of the office for some period of time, and then you won't be able to do anything with the credit card system, um, absent, I guess, another approval from the board, signing somebody else. So it's really just to set up Ms. Clancy and then Denise and Colleen as the backup. Um, this may raise questions in people's minds relative to the use of the credit cards.
Yes, it does.
We don't, we don't really have a policy relative to the use of credit cards. We can certainly draft one and adopt one. I think if you look through the manifest on a bi-weekly basis, you'll see that a lot of departments use the credit cards quite frequently.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether the board wants to...
How many credit cards do we have out there?
I would say all of the department heads. Well, Karen Rossi doesn't have one, because I know if they wanna use a credit card for something, they use mine. Um, but all the department heads have credit cards.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Hm?
This form is to allow these three individuals to access the credit card information, or is it to give them credit cards?
No, not to give them credit cards.
So these are the three...
To be the administrators of the credit card account.
So may I ask why you are not on this list?
Because I have to approve certain...
So it's a separation of...
So it's a separation of, yes.
So do we actually need three individuals on this particular list? I can see reasoning for one, and two, not three, question for it. And the thing is, how often does this happen? In terms of changing credit card information? Is it accessing or changing?
I know that it's changing, um, and it may also be accessing.
So I guess I would want more information, specifically one, what you guys talked about. Can we have a list of the people who have credit cards and the limits on those particular credit cards? And also, I need some more information about this. Is this changing, accessing, and what exactly is this?
And also, do we need three people?
And do we need three?
I'd like to limit it as much as I can to...
I would like to have a credit card policy. That says, here's, here's where it can be used for, here's what it can't be used for, or how it can be used. It can't be given to somebody else to use it?
Well, that'll create a problem.
Well, then, okay.
Like, now I'm just...
Whatever it is, I'm just saying, if you have to change the language, I'm not drafting it. But, but all I'm, all I'm trying to do is come up with a framework that tells them the, the do's and do nots over the credit card policy.
Yeah, something, we'll check them up with a draft one that says, you know, who can have a, a credit card number one. And then, obviously, at this point, in some, obviously, check what all the department heads with the common uses are. I think you can get a best practice list at this point.
And Ms. Rossi uses yours, I don't know how often she uses it, I mean, she uses...
It's not, it's not often.
Okay.
Um, Eric Sawtell uses mine probably once a year for the fair, to buy things for the...
So he physically comes and takes your credit card?
Hmm?
I don't know if I like that, but...
Well, then, maybe the scarier thing for any of you who have credit cards is, I mean, I don't think Eric and I look particularly alike. Wherever he goes and uses that credit card, they let him use the credit card. It's got my name on it.
So I think we need more information. So I would like us to postpone this, uh...
Postpone that issue, but move forward with the draft policy.
Yes.
And I think two people are enough, instead of three of them.
Okay.
Next item was nine F, oh, it's Public Meeting this.
Definitely.
F.
Yeah, um, in number four, um, I know what was said, but what was said, I don't believe is true, because we were just talking about it. It says, fourth and fifth paragraph, it says, "The fund balance as of the last audit was approximately one point eight million dollars." It's not one point eight million dollars.
I'm sorry, what date, you're looking at, September eleventh?
The eleventh, I'm, September eleventh.
Item number four?
Yep.
Evening?
I'm sorry. Eight, no. Number four, that's sub, sub under three.
That's four under three, my bad.
That's four under three, which is the secretary's problem, because it has to have a different numbering system if you go to a sub.
So the fund balance as of the last audit was approximately one point eight million?
Which is not. So I don't wanna give people the impression that's what it was, because the fund balance was two million, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars as of the last audit. So I don't, I don't know, I know that you said it.
Yeah.
But it's not correct.
Okay.
So the minutes can reflect that that's what was said.
Mm-hmm.
But I want something in there that says, "Look, the fund balance I found was actually two million, twenty-four." Just so people don't know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I propose that you put in an asterisk or something, that the actual audit, or if you wanna change your words, audit here.
Well, actually, it would be tonight
Yep.
that it goes into the record. I mean, we can't, you're right, that's what was said.
Yeah.
And now you're saying, "Well, that was inaccurate, so we reflect it in tonight's minutes."
That's fine. I'm happy with that.
Good.
Except for number three, that the town, town secretary needs to change the numbering, so it doesn't get so confusing.
Yeah, should've been ABC. Well, but then it would've been, yeah. And it's just a little confusing.
That's right.
That's been really near evaluation on my list either.
Would you say confusing?
Confusing numbering system on the minutes.
They must have a class for that, Denise, we'll have to send you through the class about...
We could do it with Roman numerals, you know, and then you have like the, yeah.
Yes, you elevate it too.
Hmm?
You elevate it.
Well, I'm gonna be ready in a week.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Well, you're raised. Yep, you get, yep. You can get a little more...
You sure they got it? He's been elevated?
He's, yeah, I've been elevated.
Those two, extraordinary meetings, we were both... Slightly Brown wanted to know how much more money he gets paid for doing that.
What is going on?
It's COVID. Oh, my gosh. Takes us an hour to do the minutes. Maybe.
Just think years from now, it's the only thing that's gonna happen. I'm gonna think what actually happened.
It doesn't matter. I actually got legal opinion on it.
Okay. Did I approve it?
Is the board.
What is this? We're doing three. That's shaking. Oh, leave that. Are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Item number ten, moved to, moved to entry to non-public session. We have Charles A ninety-one dash colon three two A, transfer station manager review. A fire chief, special details, A fire chief, P I R.
Second.
Will call vote, Mr. Burby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
This is La Course, yes. Vote your carries. Tom, Mr. Redway, Joe, it's close. Where is this, where is this? Oh, it's leftover piece of paper. Okay, item twelve, miscellaneous unfinished business.
Mr. Burby? Um, we attended the presentation at Beggar Gardens about their future plans, that looks interesting. They're putting in or proposing, I guess you guys would see it eventually, that would be the planning board. Parking lot, event center, they're looking to raise one and a half million dollars.
Yep.
So they're looking to do the parking lot expansion this fall sometime, so...
What they're looking for is, um...
Yeah, they gave us a little...
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-two or something, parking lot down there. And one is one twenty-five is the road, and this is where their house is now.
Yeah.
And, um, just the parking area here.
Is it on, um, it's not an easement property, is it on current use property?
It's, I don't know there at this time. That's a good question. It's a good question, what's gonna happen, and how that would change things. They have their own parking lot, which is up here.
Up here. Which is...
Small.
One of the questions is, did they ever get that parking lot approved?
No, it's not legal.
So it's illegal?
It's illegal. It's part of the issue. And, um, yeah, they've been in front of the board, we, the board, the planning board has been allowing them to continue under limited circumstances with respect to, they have to have, uh, well, originally, they had to have a special detail out there. We moved that away when their volunteers got trained by our facility, uh, so then they could do it themselves at this time. Um, a lot of the issues, of course, was parking in the road, we took care of that particular issue. We also, in the future, they wanna put a, a latrine in at running water, which, which I think is a great idea.
And they also wanna put in an event center, which is, I guess, the next stage over. Have they talked to you about that yet?
Yes. And of course, the issue is that when these people live here, they never thought this kinda thing would happen. And what was originally supposed to be, you know, twenty people on a weekend is a hundred and fifty, two hundred, three hundred.
Right, and I think it's gonna grow significantly.
So the planning board is very sensitive to neighboring issues. There'll probably be plantings here, there's gonna be workers put in, that's... There'll probably be plantings here, there's gonna be buses put in, that kind of stuff.
So all access is off high road, not one twenty-five?
All A O G, you have to come in here, there'll be gates, gates on here where it's not being used. This planning board is gonna put a lot, there'll be a lot of details.
So there's, the parking lot will accommodate buses? They seem to have a lot of bus traffic, so...
Bus traffic, and also accommodate fire truck as well.
Lighting, they have to light the parking lot so there's open to things you guys deal with them?
And handicap parking as well. Where it sits now is that they will not be able to operate next spring or summer, until this is complete.
That's why they're pushing to get it done this fall, so...
Yes, at this time. So it's an interesting, you know, it's interesting with town of Lee, because it is a very pretty garden, there's no question about it.
And they plan on expanding it?
Yes.
Keep the garden itself? And I thought, I mean, to be honest with you, I'm not a garden person, for sure. But I was very impressed with it, very impressed with it. Liked it, enjoyed it very much. And they have a director, I forget his name right off.
John Fourteen.
Huh?
John Fourteen. They're gonna take care of it, and it's finally transferred.
He's, uh, he's, 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 he's gonna drive this thing very well.
So that's the big thing that's going on the planning board. The other issue is that, and Ms. Rossi did send out to all the department heads and everybody about the master plan, and she's got most of them back, and they're consolidating at this time to see, to answer the question, what has been done since the past master plan? So that should be coming forth. Yeah, I think, um, I think the chairperson is aware of the C I P as well, so they must be working on that as budget season's coming up.
Good. Can I ask a question about the A D A lady from the state? Any contact with her?
I haven't made contact with her yet.
Who's the N D A lady?
A D A.
A D A, this, oh, yeah, she was maybe gonna give us an assessment or whatever.
And I guess, one truck already went down to Houston, I don't know how they filled it up.
Yeah, there's another one headed to Florida, I guess tomorrow.
Yeah. There goes one. Can't believe that hurricane is still out there. This seems forever, anything, you all right? Anything else? Move to your...
We're good, thank you.
All in favor? I, some carriers, thank you very much.
Plus you get paid to do this.